We have time.
What do you want printed?
We found the conditions for falls.
Oh, do you want me to go print it?
Remember who just made that.
Is that Sarah in town that's interested?
We just want to make sure we're doing something different than one person and you have to hear this. I'm just going to be more humorous than what we answered before, vice versa.
No, I need to, it's just an idea, don't worry, you got a lot of things going on.
I think it's a great idea.
I don't know what maybe you're thinking about that.
Yeah, no, 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 I just, you know, one day I was sort of, I was had more energy than I just thought. That we have a nice little, you know, area where we're there and maybe we can use it for. What's that? Yeah, I just like. It's all right, no worries, I just, you know, one day it's something that's amusing, you know.
Well, you thought you might have heat stroke.
Yeah, it was boiling on, I thought maybe it's a combination of heat stroke, but you know, whatever. So I still festivals with a C in it, but it's been solved.
So.
Festicles, not festivals.
So, oh, that's what I'm talking about. So, so, because, um.
All right, it's seven o'clock, why don't we call this September meeting of the Ronson Planning Board's Order? In attendance, we have Glenn Chase, Mike Pullo, Kevin Haynes, myself, Mel Zingland, Carolyn Kendall, and John Hinsman. Since Patrick is absent, tonight I'll appoint Carolyn as a voting member, since she's an alternate. First up on the agenda is, I apologize, continuation of the site plan review for Daniel Peppin.
We don't have a recorded secretary at the meeting.
We don't.
We're being videotaped.
We have people that introduce themselves for the secretary, which is going to have, we're going to do the review from tape.
These are current ones ahead, three large and, yeah, several, I'm looking at seventeen if you want.
Sure.
So, for the record, Kevin McEnany, McEnany survey, we did the plan for Dan Peppin. Dan's here with me as well, should we have these questions with him? So I just might recap what we did at the last meeting. We were here in August and presented the site plan for the garage facility, the repair facility that Dan operates on Summersworth Road. And at that time, there was a number of items that John Krebs had brought up during a review of the plan. I have since made those decisions and sent them to John. And basically, I can go through where we put the changes on the plan, just so you could see where they are as well. So the first one, first one, first item was really not applicable, because it was a not lot line mergers, lot line elimination. So that was something that really wasn't even applicable. Number two had to do with, sorry, hang on. So number one was, he just explained that he needed the application. Number two, he said on note seven, we refer to a twenty-foot by public service easement. He wanted that shown on the plan, which we have.
Okay, okay, absolutely.
You see where he is? This location right here. It runs from here to the Quonset hut.
Okay.
The third item was, had to do with the Quonset hut and when that came about and whether or not that was on it. And that was shown on the previous plan, so there's been some time I think they've due to that. Number four was, we need to address how the storage. And we put a note on the plan to that effect, note twelve. And it says solid waste, scrap metals, oils, et cetera, will be stored inside the building until they recycle or partly disposed of on an as needs basis.
Do you notice where twelve is? I see eleven on the side.
It's right, it's just to the side of, see eleven, we went to the left.
I was lost too.
A little unconventional.
Okay, all right, sorry.
Yeah, that's all right.
So that addresses.
It should be added four, I believe.
So this is his, just to, so I don't know if you got his.
I did get his, yeah, I was going to go through the old ones and then go back through them.
Yep.
Yeah, just to let you know where I put the changes on there. So number five, added additional lighting. We added lighting in front of the building here, on the building, we had previously, we had one here on the side door. We also added a light to be installed in this existing pole, which I think, when we get forward to John's other comment, I'm hoping that that's going to cover this area lighting here that we're targeting on. So that was item five. Item six, we added landscaping. We had landscaping along the driveway here in the front, and then a screening area along the parking area beside the building. And there's a detail on the lower right-hand corner beside the, of the detail of the planting, and how closely together they should be to make sure that it's screened properly. Number seven, we had talked about, on the last plan, we had said either pavement or brick pavement, or some sort of a paper. We've changed that now to asphalt, and it's going to be on both sides of the facility, as well as twenty-five feet in front, so that it would accommodate any cars that are parked outside, because I think it was a concern that we didn't want to park on gravel if there was any leakage of oil or anything like that, so that's how we addressed that. And then the paved part about the ADA requirements, I think adding the pavement satisfies that ADA requirement, so that was that. And then there was a spelling error that we corrected on the, in the storage note. So that was the last time, and John sent this on, and I don't know if people all looked at this memo as well. This was today, I believe, today. So number one, he still has about this solid waste and scrap metal, and how we're going to deal with that. I'm not sure if he actually saw that note.
He might have missed it.
Yeah.
I think this comment is wrong.
Okay, okay, good, so that. Lighting cut sheets, he just wants a, like a detail of what the lighting would be.
Okay.
You know, we spec it out, yeah, we can add that on here, if that's satisfactory to the board. And then the next one has to do with the lighting, the yard lighting, and I'm not, again, I'm not sure he saw that addition of that pole light, which I think should be satisfactory to light up that area across the parking area. Number four had to do with the requirement for paving all of the driveway, and I do have a waiver request here that. This has to do with that section three, five B parking lot design, and what I've said in here is the site currently consists of gravel driveway access with a large parking slash travel area in front of and around a commercial building. The client will install an asphalt apron at the garage base entrance and on both sides of the garage, as depicted on the plan. So we're seeking a waiver to allow the remaining driveway parking area to remain gravel. So I guess that would have to be a separate action for the waiver.
Yep.
And, let's see, what else? Then John, number five had to do with a note about vehicle storage and those types of things. And I was asked by the board to reach out to Jeff O'Leary, and I reached out to Jeff, and he told me that he never received a letter or permission to approve for the proper language to put on, so he doesn't think he has changed that plan to do that. So I had no way of knowing what that language was.
Did you find what you were looking for? Yes, so. So we do have a notice of decision. Eleven species? No, sorry.
This is, this is what?
Yep. So it's just, is there, I don't see where there's a number of vehicles there. Vehicles, no vehicles stored, not in fourteen, that's what it is. Okay. I mean, he has suggested here.
Yeah, John suggested some language in there as well.
Yep.
It sounds like he's saying forty-five days, but it sounds like it's more than what's on the other.
Right. Okay, well, I guess we'll have to talk that through, what, you know, what's reasonable and what's, you know.
Do you have an extra copy of that?
Sure. Sorry, I'll take it. Okay, I think we, you know, as a board can discuss it and come up with something that works for really.
The only question is that we have, that Dan had, is there's no car sales? And is it possible that he could be allowed to sell cars, but not, not to display it on the road, but then to advertise them on, you know, Craigslist or wherever, people come and look at them and.
It's a separate thing, the zoning ordinance, car sales versus car.
It's a use.
Yeah, it's a separate use.
Do they know if there's a lot in this zone? This is a lot.
Industrial.
It's a note something on too.
No.
It's not that.
Just industrial.
Sale or rental automobiles. What's under it?
Industrial.
There was a. The saying is industrial, you need to find which column, because it doesn't say it on the, column three. With an exemption, it's allowed.
Is.
So that's a zoning board thing?
I think that's a separate matter of the project we're discussing here.
Yeah, but if you want to do that, you could pursue it.
Right, what I don't want is something that you would put on there as a restriction, and you're going to, is that, is that what's going forward?
Right, I think we covered with the zoning ordinance, we don't have to enter language specifically.
We're not fine that it's permitted, but he has every right to pursue that.
Okay, okay, yeah, that's fine, as long as he can go through the proper chain, we'll do that.
Right, and that would prevent us from doing the project again, now on that one floor.
Okay, I think what is your point, if we went along with the language that Mr. Krebs is suggesting, that you don't want to be set up to fail the way you are.
Exactly.
So I think that's what we've got to consider.
The other thing that we're on in previous meetings, we have no issue with hours of operation. Fourteen consecutive days are fine, we don't need the forty-five.
Okay.
Want to be consistent with what was done before.
So that would be a good thing. Okay, so at this point, I'll ask if anyone on the board has questions for the applicant, Kevin?
I would just like to go through enough to belabor the issue of the parking. Because one dimension that I do not see here, does say that you're twenty-five feet forward of the building, and the building is forty by four.
Yeah.
It says, it says on the sides, to the extent of the gravel area, but that dimension is really not labeled on here, so. You know, forward to backward, I see you've got twenty-five feet in front, and you almost strip to the back of the building, as depicted.
Yeah.
So I probably have twenty-five and thirty-five along this dimension here. Because I don't have, I don't have this little subtraction here labeled on here, so.
Right.
Just thinking out loud, twenty-five and thirty-five is thirty-five or forty are, you know, not going to argue about it. That would give us sixty feet, okay? And because I don't know this gravel extent, I don't know how far this comes up, so I'm thinking, you're probably looking at parking cars, just one, along this outer limit here of the pavement, is that correct?
Yes.
And you have sixty feet there.
Yeah.
So what do you anticipate for an average car width and by area?
If you, if you do, if you did a parallel parking space, those are ten by twenty.
Parallel parking, nose to tail?
Yes.
As, you don't think you'd get more if you went?
Oh, you probably would if you went that way, but I'm just saying, what you described, if you, if you're doing, if you're doing a head-in parking, those are nine by eighteen.
So how many could be fit there, in sixty feet?
In sixty feet, you could fit six.
Okay, and then the base to the garage doors, as they're depicted here, are they on the front of the building against your approachable space?
Yes.
There's two bays there.
Yes.
And we know we've got twenty-five feet out from the building.
That's right.
Now, what do you figure for an anticipated depth of length of a car? Because when you back a car out, you really don't have ample parking on the front there, on pavement, to back a car out and safely maneuver, because you'd have to subtract, you know, the width of this door here, you know, because you wouldn't want to park a car. I'm just trying to define the, because who, your list here is eight, eleven, I'm sorry, twenty spaces, correct? Twenty foot spaces.
Yeah, that's on, across the way.
So we know we have six on the side. Yeah, that would help. Because that's sixty feet, so we put six there. And we have two employees, or it's just you, Dan?
Just one.
So we have one employee, and then the other one's designated ADA, which I really like what you did there.
Yeah.
So those don't count toward your car storage parking for, for, I think you listed on here four per bay, so it's a total of eight plus, you said two, you came up with ten, right? You're including the service bay inside as parking?
Yes.
So we're up to eight, right? But I'm just trying to, you know, tell me, you know this better than I, I'm just trying to see it all.
So as far as like the travel width for backing out of the garage, a normal travel width is twenty-four feet. If you were in a parking, parking lot, you'd have nine by eighteen on one side, twenty-four foot travel width, and then nine by eighteen on the other side. So that's why I went with the twenty-five, because it was beyond.
So you wouldn't park cars on, along that front, those at all?
No, not at all.
So we have six along the side, and if you do two inside the bays.
Two inside and then two on the ADA and employee power.
And then employee parking, but then.
And then we have parking across.
So one, two, three, four.
But that's not for a service bay, because that's the employer, employee parking, right? Does that count, does that get to count any ADA, gets to count towards your four per bay? I'm only reading what, you know, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I think that that's a total, that four per bay is a total, which would include.
Your employee and your ADA.
Customers, yes.
As well as your service.
And that, we have additional parking across the way that's gravel.
Yes.
So we're not storing cars.
We're not storing cars.
People coming in and out.
It's overflow, overflow parking, where employees could park there.
But anything on that gravel there, we need to be moved within the fourteen days that we talked about, it would have to be valid overnight.
I was thinking you're only going to park.
They're all, they're all there, yeah. The fourteen day storage of the vehicles will be on the pavement section or in the garage.
Are you planning on expanding, Mr. Peppin, do you want to run more than one bay? Not now, but I've been five, ten years, the people would be like, they have a couple of people retired by. Fair enough, but.
I haven't really thought that far.
We want to, we want to plan ahead for you, because that's what you're, you know.
Yeah.
Because we don't want to come back and say, oh, by the way, now if you want to add, you're going to add pavement or something, you know, just do it now.
Right, so conceivably, during the day, a employee could park over here.
On the side.
Yeah, that's true, that's true. And then, and then if we did expand, we could come back and extend that pavement over to add, to add some.
If you want to start to keep cars over, add another employee.
Add another employee, you're right.
So that's only for overnight storage, so that no vehicles are, in theory, most of them there would be maybe non-running vehicles waiting for repairs or parts that come in or something like that.
That's right.
Those are going to mostly sit there anyways. The cars up front will be the daily traffic, that'll be the ones paying bills.
Yes, and nothing parks in front of the bays at all.
Okay, I was, yeah, but you could pull someone up there at the end of the day, of course.
You could, you could park it overnight, you know. Yes.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Just to clear this, Kevin.
Yeah.
So you're saying that in terms of the asphalt area, you've got that as designated as vehicle storage area, then you've also got this area over here, that's just gravel as being storage area, how are those two?
It probably shouldn't be legal to store, I should probably change that and just say overflow parking or something.
And I guess the only reason I bring it up is that, you know, vehicles leak fluids.
Yeah.
And, you know, we got the river not too far away from, you know, downstream from here, and I guess I'm kind of concerned about that. And can you also tie in for me the idea of, and I know it's not technically before us, the idea of selling vehicles, would your plan as written permit vehicles for sale as opposed to vehicles to be repaired, to be stored other than on the vehicle storage area right around the building? How do you mean to make that a multi-pleg, a difficult question?
But I do think, so, so on the site overnight, a total of eight to ten cars, I don't know, you know.
Eight car lengths.
Yeah, so whether those are for repair or for sale.
Do you think it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't matter? I guess I'm just trying to get, is to, isn't it, isn't the intent of what we're trying to do here is have all the vehicles, whether it's overnight or, or more, or up to fourteen days, to be all on the asphalt and not on gravel? I guess this one, I guess I thought that that was the issue, when I, I guess I'm kind of concerned that it's kind of, it's morphed into something that's less than clear to me.
So the intent is to have everything that's parked there on the, you know, for the fourteen day period, it's probably going to be way less than that anyways, but to be on the asphalt, okay? And probably a poor use of words, but storage on that gravel area across, and if that's something that doesn't seem, it could be just overflow parking or something like that. If that, if that's, you know, more agreeable, then we'd be glad to change that.
I think you won't do that, because I think what we don't want to see happen, we don't want this to turn into a junkyard.
Yeah.
Or Steven, you know, that's a problem on the street, we don't need, we don't need additional, you know, you know, on the streets.
And I'm sure if we go to the zoning board for special exception, it's probably going to be conditions that they're going to put on as well.
Yeah.
So I'll take that storage off, and we'll put overflow parking.
If that works, I think that's good. Any other questions before we open up the?
I would like to see depicted the dimensions that are missing of the extent of the pavement around the building.
I can do that.
I think I'd like to see that.
I have a scale in my car, if you'd like me to grab that and just see what they have.
I'm just talking for finality, you know, I mean.
Add, add the dimensions on those pavement sections.
Sure, sure, I mean, you know, as this, as this progresses to approval, when that does happen, there'll be conditions, and, you know, if Peppin just wants to live, we'll adhere to those conditions, and there's no reason that that wouldn't be the case. So I see he has ample parking for ten vehicles, as you explained to me.
Yeah.
And I understand from the low traffic, the people waiting at the parking tables and.
Anything else? So at this point, we're going to reopen the public hearing that we started at our last meeting, and take any comments or questions that the public might have.
Of course, is there anywhere in here, so that I don't miss it in reading this, is there anything in here that relates specifically to your, your, our discussion of the sales? Is there any car sales wording anywhere on here, so we can make sure that it is written in a language that is happy for both sides of the table, so to speak?
I don't believe we have.
Because, like I said, if it's permitted by a special exception, he has a right to pursue that on his own behalf.
Right.
If it's not for that at all, he also has a right to go to ZBAs, I mean, you know, he's a business owner, so. Is there anywhere on here?
Yeah, for this plan, we didn't address car sales at all. It was just a repair for sale.
Any, any other questions, comments from the public? Hearing done, I'm going to close the public hearing at this point. Actually, why don't we, in case you have to come back another time, just continue the public hearing, so that we don't have to read notice and all that. So at this point, input from the board on, well, I guess there's a couple of things. There is a request for a waiver.
Yep, absolutely.
That we previously talked about.
My only, it's not a concern, I'm going to back up. I know there were concerns the last time we were all together, and I shared one about fairness to other applicants in town that have wanted to offer a similar repair facility. I'm looking at the notice of decision from before. To me, I think, and we need to figure out what we're going to do with Mr. Krebs's number five on the technical number, but they're different sites. They're, and I think we need to be consistent, and we should be fair to the prior applicant, but they're different sites. The other applicant, applicant, pardon me, was right on Main Street, very visible. This is set back in the industrial zone, you know, it'll be screened, so. That's not to say that people won't be coming and complaining to me about something, trust me, they do all the time, so we may have to come to see you, but. If the applicant's okay with the fourteen consecutive days, I don't know if we need to be quite as restricted about the number of cars that can be there. But it has to be okay with that, I own the concern. But all the other, all the other concerns that Mr. Krebs raised, I've addressed, so I'm okay.
Okay.
We just need to figure out exactly how we're going to say, address number five, or line, or change it to fourteen days.
I think the element of that falls on if the applicant agrees to that number versus the forty-five as suggested. Right, they do, they are different sites, they do, they do both stand on their own, and this has been corrected correctly, where it really satisfies our requirements, and, you know, if it's a requirement, it's enforceable.
Right, right.
And no one likes to get involved in that, you know, whether it's business owner or town, but it is enforceable from where it is seen, so. And, but, you know, the saying of you can't make everybody happy.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to. So is fourteen days a reasonable amount of time? I don't even know if it was for over, across the street to come through, so.
I'm just, we're just discussing that, and, and, I mean, I look at it like sometimes, you know, a customer dropped a car off, I might not get on to it a day or two later. And I was just thinking, it just happened to me last week, where one of my customers dropped it off, and then he went on vacation for a week, so. I think it's getting a little bit closer tight.
I think if you just don't want it to turn into a story.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't hear anybody, right? That's what we're really concerned about.
I think fourteen sounds short, that sounds.
Yeah, I thought fourteen's a little short, and I thought John's forty-five was a little long.
Right, right.
I felt forty-five was long, too.
I mean, can we compromise and go thirty days?
I think, I mean, I'm, I'm agreeable to that.
Well, like I said, the fairness to the tenant, other locations might brought a good point. You know, locations are different, and what might seem like thirty days out in the woods by a field is like, you know, fourteen days on my corner of the brain, and, and, you know, whatever, so. I don't think thirty is unreasonable.
I don't think thirty is unreasonable either, and I don't mean to come back to this, but I just I meant too much being put for lawyer tonight, but, you know, the language of John's, in John's number five is no vehicles should be parked backslash stored, which I think is kind of the same thing. And so I'm trying to get back to this idea of, I might ask Kevin this, if I can have permission, what's the difference between vehicle parking and vehicle storage? I mean, because I don't, and the devil's advocate, you know, he could have the, a lot of numbers of vehicles stored here, and then he has more vehicles over here that he can say, well, those are just parked, and they're not on the asphalt, which is my main concern, is vehicle food stripping. So what is the difference between vehicle parking and vehicle storage?
You know, there's probably a legal definition.
But I mean, because your intent on the plan, what is the intent, how is the intent of this area, which you've labeled on your vehicle storage and employee parking, how is that different from the vehicle storage area next to the building? That's what I'm trying to get at.
Would the use be different for those two different spots?
I don't think it would be different, except now we're, we understand that the board wants us to do any vehicle storage except for potentially daytime parking in that gravel area, but all overnight, at the very least, stored on the asphalt.
So would there be an objection to putting, inserting into this, into the plan that any overnight parking shall occur in the vehicle storage area?
No.
I think, I think that's, that, that satisfies my concern about fluids and so forth.
And can I go right on the note that John wants, was in the same?
It's fine with me, yeah.
Seems like it's part of the same structure.
All vehicles on this lot, all vehicles parked overnight on this lot shall be parked in the delineated parking areas on pavement or asphalt or whatever you want to say, I mean.
With no overnight storage.
On, on pavement section, on, on pavement section, something like that.
Well, there can be a. Right, right, right.
But, and, and no unregistered dismantled vehicles shall be permitted on this site, and that's the, that's the problem running through our business, so I think we need to be consistent about that. And we, we should strip out the no vehicle sales permitted, because they are permitted. Through, through those standards.
Right.
And you have a car wash, too, if you want. That's already permitted, it's a note. Or pavement, it's that.
And we're just two other items about the surveyor's stamp and the wetland scientist, that's no problem.
Okay. So with that, do we want to address the waiver request first?
Fine applicant, they already, fine application, if we can do that last one?
Yes.
We did, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. So I would entertain a motion to, to grant this waiver request. Okay, I think it's been read, Kevin, you read it, so we have a.
Yeah, if anything, I'd be glad to point it out, if everybody's clear. It's just basically the apron that we have around there, and everything else is gravel, and that's what we're asking for.
And you agreed to put in the, the actual measurements.
Oh, yeah, we'll put the dimensions on there, you can make that a condition if you want. You might as well have it in the record, I mean, it's no big deal, it's just, just, just as good.
Well, you're kind of caught by the fact that you have to, should be able to show us tenants parking, parking spaces in the building, in the ADA, in the employee, so, and as is depicted here, as long as you park six along the side, and, and service, you know, drive vehicles, and you know you have two inside, you know you have two in the left.
Yeah, we'll, we'll add those.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to accept the waiver.
Second motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the waiver is granted. So as far as the application overall, John did say in his note that he has no additional comments, and at least the board should be in a position to grant approval of the conditions. I think we have a good idea of what those conditions are.
I'd just like to hear some. So. Just overall, here at the same time, so that we can, I think that's important.
But then, yes, if you've got them.
Yes.
Do you want, do you want the, you want?
Whoever's, whoever's easiest for, you know, the.
Is that the red ones? Little C right here?
I have right in front of me, sorry. I've got that, so. So you've already addressed a few of these, so they've been crossed off, so. You've already addressed number one.
Yep.
Number two, you need to indicate the, the cut sheets for lighting still. Okay, so we'll keep that.
That one did.
Number three, you have addressed, as far as I'm concerned, for the lighting. Four, four is a waiver, we're taking care of that, so. Number five, we need to come up, we need to work some of that.
Yep.
So all vehicles parked on this lot shall be within delineated spaces. All, all parked overnight. All vehicles on this lot parked overnight shall be within delineated parking areas. Is that, is that clear, but is that clear urban? Okay, so all vehicles on this lot parked overnight shall be within the delineated parking areas. No vehicles shall be parked slash stored on this site for more than thirty days.
I think you need to change what you have from parking in the first part of the phrase, to vehicle storage area.
Instead of delineated parking.
Right, because.
It's, it's a storage on, it's referenced vehicle storage on the actual lot.
Yep. Okay, okay.
John, John, let's look at it, so I don't think it's one, it's a version, it's actually made right here.
Vehicle storage.
And that's all.
Okay. All vehicles parked within the overnight shall be parked. All vehicles on this lot shall, parked overnight shall be within the specified vehicle storage area. I actually have saved it down there, so, so I can remember. All vehicles on this lot shall be parked, that are parked overnight shall be. All vehicles shall be parked, all vehicles parked overnight shall be within, within the delineated.
Vehicle storage.
Vehicle storage area. Are you writing this down, John, so I don't have to say it down?
Well, I was just going to, let me, let me come up with my compromise, so. No overnight parking backslash storage of vehicles except on the delineated vehicle storage area.
Perfect, perfect. But, but no vehicle shall be parked stored on this site for more than thirty days. No unregistered dismantled vehicles shall be permitted on this site. Do you have that? Do we have it part of the official record? This makes us, you know.
It does.
Okay.
I'm just, I just want to, you know, the other thing I just want, you might want to add is that we change the wording of the gravel area, that it be moved, that vehicle storage, that'd be, that'd be conflicting with what we want to accomplish.
That's my, that's my conditions.
That can become a number five or something. One, if we can become one, two, every time number three. Change. See, I like the small one, because it can fit from the, it says, you know, get this vehicle storage. Change vehicle.
Well, they want to leave six, the last two on there about the signatures?
Yeah, and I was going to say, four and five. Overflow parking.
Yes.
So those are our conditions. So I will move additional approval based on the following conditions. Number one, lighting cut sheet shall be provided for the two lights proposed on the building, which light the building entrance. Number two.
Number two, no overnight parking slash storage of vehicles except on the delineated vehicle storage area.
No vehicle shall be parked stored on this site for more than thirty days. No unregistered dismantled vehicles shall be permitted on this site. Condition number three, change vehicle storage to overflow parking on the plan. Number four, the certified wetland scientist that delineated, yeah, delineated the wetlands of this site, Mark West shall stamp the final plan. And number five, the New Hampshire Lite Land Surveyor that prepared this plan shall stamp on the side, face of the stamp on the final plan.
Is there a condition of labeling the missing dimensions of the, I think we should add that.
Number six.
So we have accurate dimension, so.
Dimensions shall be added to pay services, for pay services.
Yes, yes.
Second.
Thank you, Caroline. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, you have conditional approval.
Thank you very much.
So we can draw up the notice of decision if you want to make the changes.
Yep.
We, do we have amended, oh, this doesn't need to be filed.
This is not filed, okay.
We give it up.
But I can, I don't need to even sign it, but.
I don't know, do you stand for something, I'm not sure.
I, I think it would be a good idea for you to see a final, you know, that the conditions are on that.
And then I would give you multiple copies, so you could have a stamped copy, you could have a stamped copy from my file. And then the, so the review of these conditions, is that just going to be with the chair? Or does it go back to John to look at it?
Yeah.
Can we consider to allow you to sign in our absence, you know, as a standing owner signer?
Yep.
We have to, we have to grant that permission? By case, or?
No, we just, we just.
It's approved on those conditions.
About the conditions, that they're all.
Might as well go through and make sure that.
The buyer's.
So we can be in touch as we have.
Okay, so I don't, I don't have to send this to John for review, you can just look at those changes, they're pretty simple on, on adding something.
Okay.
We could, but we're following the advice.
Yeah, I think, I think we're good.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for coming in. Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes, which were sent out right after our last meeting.
I motion to approve the prior meeting's minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Correspondent, I haven't been in the planning room to, did you happen to know, correspondent? Okay, while she's doing that, we can talk about other business.
There are, there was a suggestive change that Suzanne T. would forward as.
Yes, and.
The last one?
Yeah. I had a question about that, so, so she just wants a change, let me just find the note.
Around the.
Building permits.
Building permits you were saying.
Do we need to have a public hearing for that? Okay, so we need to get that on next month's agenda.
And they, we want to go to the discussion for next month's agenda, and then. We have a calendar now.
Yeah, I saw that today.
And, I mean, busy, this is good, because I don't know what the, um, leave me a moment, I think I can probably pull it up here. It's not, the public hearings for zone and, are December, right, deadlines? December and January, is that right, I remember it very well.
Planning board, it depends, it depends if you're going to have more than one hearing, but there are deadlines on the important dates calendar, and I can grab that, but you have until January, but I wouldn't do that.
It is January, okay.
Like, it's like the first week of January.
We don't want to decide it, I mean, we have, there are different requirements now that we're operating on different. We have two models, so.
You've got to be on the agenda for next, for next meeting, is there anything else?
I have nothing else.
If we're all seeing this again, no.
But we can meet, we can start discussing.
Oh, yeah.
That, and other changes, that.
I think we need to, yes, zoning ordinance at least needs some.
Yeah.
We'll definitely, we'll have some time.
There are changes that might need to be done to subdivision or, they don't have to go for the motor, but we're just thinking about it.
Okay.
I, as you all recall, missed the.
Training.
I don't know how I missed it last time, but I did, as my membership on the zoning board went to the training for that, we put on the National Municipal Association, there was discussion there by the presenter that there's going to change the law, and I brought the materials with me, something to the effect of you can now, but you have to have a change in your local laws, put a timeline on site plans for, what's the word I'm looking for? Substantial.
You have to be vested in the.
Right, right, and I think, I don't know whether ours, or whether we want to consider putting that type of language.
Yes.
This is one of the big things that Mr..
Okay.
Right. Suggest.
And also, our accessory dwelling units are not.
Yes.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
We have a lot more power for us in the next month, or next month, but.
Great. Okay. Anything else for other business? Okay, so our, our next meeting is October 2nd, if anyone can't make it.
By the way, my belated apologies for missing that training, I did it, but I did it.
Wasn't the same.
What's that?
Wasn't the same.
What, I know, I was supposed to say, I apologized, but I missed it.
You mean John Radigan's training? No. So is it?
I missed the.
When the gentleman came in.
I missed, I missed, yeah, I missed the training for this board, and I did apologize.
I'll see if I can find the handout, I don't know if you got the handout, Vicky?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think I did.
All right, so I'm going to see if I can find that, and I'll email it to you.
Great, thank you.
So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we return.